I'd like to call to order the December 5th Stanley County Board of Education meeting. Mr. Swearingen?
I'll have our invocation, let's power our heads. Father God, we just give you thanks for this day and every day. We thank you for the blessings and the opportunity that we have to serve you. And we thank you especially for our communities and our schools, and we ask your continued blessings upon each. As we go throughout our deliberations tonight, we just seek your wisdom and guidance. May all that we do be pleasing to you. Christ's name I pray, amen. If you'll join me in our...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, nominations are now open for chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education.
Superintendent, I would like to nominate Melvin Poole for chair, please.
Melvin Poole has been nominated as chairperson. Are there further nominations? A motion has been made by Ms. Watson. Second? To close the nomination. I'll second. Motion's been made by Vicki Watson and second by Patty Crump. The nominations are now closed. All in favor of Melvin Poole for chairperson of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion passes as Melvin Poole for chair of the Stanley County Schools Board of Education.
Next item will be the election of our vice chair, and the floor is open for nominations for vice chair of the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Ryan McIntyre as vice chair.
Okay, Ryan McIntyre has been nominated for vice chair. Are there any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Glenda Gibson.
Any further nominations?
None nominations are closed.
Motion by Ms. Watson to close nominations. All those in favor of the motion to close nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries, nomination is closed. We can do this with written ballot if you like. You have that with you if you want to write your person's name. Print the person's name on the ballot and then sign your name beneath your vote. And if you will, pass those from in the direction of Mr. Lauder, and he will announce the result.
Congratulations, Ms. Gibson.
Next item of business will be something that we have all come to enjoy and appreciate very much over the years. It's not the first time these people have been here, but we're always glad to have them back. And we'll let the North Stanley High School cars and handbells. And Ms. Hudson, you're...take it away.
Happy Holidays! Happy Holidays! Happy Holidays! Happy Holidays! While the merry bells keep ringing, Happy Holidays to you! Sleigh bells ring, I listen, In the lane, so's the scent. A beautiful sight, we're having tonight, Walking in a winter wonderland. The winter rain, the blue was a blue west wind, Says the new woman. He sings a lullaby song as we go along, Walking in a winter wonderland. In the melody, you'll never stop, And pretend the bees won't cry. You'll sing out in the snowmen, Where you can do the job when you're in town. Later on, look at fire, As you dream by the fire. To face the little prey, the birds are weeping, Walking in a winter wonderland. In the melody, you'll never stop, And pretend the bees won't cry. When the clouds are over, the stars are shining, Until the other kids are down. When it snows, ain't it thrilling? Cut your nose, get some chilling. We'll fall and complain, the ice will melt, Walking in a winter wonderland. Walking in a winter wonderland. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, Everywhere you go. Take a look at the fire that's lit, Glistening once again, With candy cakes and silver lanes to go. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, Boys at every store. But the prettiest light to see is the holly candle beam On your own front door. A pair of bumblehops and a whistle and shoes is the wish of body and men. Those who want to walk and walk for a while, best have a hundred pennies in hand. And all we did, and all we wait for school to start again. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, Everywhere you go. There's a tree in the grand hotel, Water in the park as well. A sturdy kind that doesn't mind the storm. It's beginning to look a lot like Christmas, Soon the bells will start. And the thing that will make them ring is the carol that you sing Right within your heart. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, Just like the ones I used to know. Where the treetops glisten, And children listen To the years' sleigh bells in the snow. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, With every Christmas card I write. May your days be merry and bright, And may all your Christmases be white. Said the night, winter, little lamb. Do you see what I see? See what I see? Way up in the sky, little lamb. Do you see what I see? See what I see? A star, a star, Dancing in the night, With a tail as big as a car. With a tail as big as a car. Send our little lamb to the shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Hear what I hear? Ringing through the sky, shepherd boy. Do you hear what I hear? Hear what I hear? A star, a star, High above the tree, With a voice as big as the sea. With a voice as big as the sea. Said the shepherd boy to the mighty king. Do you know what I know? In your palace, my mighty king. Do you know what I know? A child, a child, Sleeping in the womb, Let us bring him silver and gold. Let us bring him silver and gold. Send a king to the people everywhere. Listen to what I say. Pray for these people everywhere. Listen to what I say. The child, a child, sleeping in the night, He will bring us goodness and light. He will bring us goodness and light. Bring us light.
Thank you so much. If that doesn't put you in the mood for Christmas, you're beyond hope. I just wonder how many here are old enough to remember five-and-dime stores. I do, but I was real little. But those are a thing of the past. Thank you so much again for bringing that presentation tonight. The next item is the East Alamo Mall Community Partnership Project. And I understand I'm supposed to...okay, you can introduce yourself and whoever else is involved.
Okay. Thank you so much for allowing us to come. And we do a project, this is an annual project called the Community Partnership Project, where our principal and our school partner with our town manager, our...excuse me, our mayor, and our county commissioners. And we come up with a prompt together. And the prompt this year was "What Makes a Good Leader." And all of our students write a piece of writing on that. And we have winners in each homeroom. And they are also encouraged to do a piece of artwork. And we had some great people from our county office to come and judge our artwork. And those were on display. And we invited many of our community stakeholders to come to our school. And many of you came and thank you so much for coming and letting the kids see you. And the purpose of the project is to get the community into our school and to get our school out into the community. So tonight, we have four students that are going to read their winning essays to you tonight. We have first grader Bristol Peck, second grader Braxton Morris, third grader Arianna Scott, and fifth grader Vincent Gregory. And I'm going to ask those four students to come on up to the front. Does it matter which one they use? Two, okay. Does this work? Can we use this? Because we have some that are kind of short. Do we have...does this work? Can we use this? Oh, hello. Thank you so much. All right, so let's start with Bristol. Come on over Bristol. Come up here so they can see you.
Hi, my name is Bristol Peck. And I am so excited to meet y'all. And I'm going to read my thing. What is a Great Community Leader? A teacher is a great community leader. A leader is hardworking. A leader tells the truth. A leader is honest and showing respect. I will be a great leader too. Everybody can be a great leader too. A great leader is...a great leader does the right thing.
Thank you. So it's second grader Braxton Morris.
My name's Braxton, and I'll be reading my "What Makes a Good Leader." A good leader is responsible, respectful, and takes care of people. I am a good leader in the hallway going to lunch.
My name is Arianna, and I will be reading "What Makes a Great Leader." What makes a great...a good leader? A good leader needs to have many good character traits. A leader needs to be nice, respectful, and honest. A good leader needs to be nice. A nice leader needs to be friendly to people. Leaders do not need to call people names. Nice leaders don't...do not need to say no in an ugly way if somebody asks them something. A leader do not need to be mean to people because the people who follow them will be mean to other people. A good leader needs to be respectful. A responsible leader needs to always do their work. Responsible leaders always take care of stuff. Leaders do not need to be late for school.
My name is Vincent Gregory, and I will be talking about three main topics on how to be a good leader. Today, you will be learning my qualities a leader should have, such as sacrifice, being humble, and honesty. Sacrifice is when someone gives up something so that someone...oh. They have so someone else can be safe. It's also when you could give up a precious item so you could be able to get stuff done, like cleaning your room. It can also mean to give up what you wanted to come to an agreement. Being humble. A leader who is humble will not brag about their achievements and success like in sports, academics, and good looks. Leaders should be humble because the people he leads will be attracted to him and want to be around him. All leaders should have a humble personality because the people he leads want to follow his example. So if a leader's bragging all the time, then the people will copy and try to be like their leader. Honesty is a good quality to have as a leader because all the people around you will trust that you will tell the truth. A leader should be able to tell the truth even if it will hurt the person's feelings. Any leader should have the confidence to tell the truth, even if it means you're going to get in trouble. At least you can have the satisfaction that you told the truth. These are all qualities a leader should have, including sacrifice, being humble, and honesty. Do you have these qualities?
We would love to be able to get a picture with all of you guys if that's possible. Great. That'd be great.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I went by the school over there while they had the writings hung up on the wall and the art and stuff. And I asked someone if they knew how to identify a good leader. And they said no. I said, "It's the one with all the arrows in their back." I'll have to remember this tonight. I got to say no in a nice way. I'll take that one away with me. We have some additional recognitions and...who do I need to defer to on this one? Teacher of the Year? Mr. Poplin, okay. Take it away.
I'll go ahead and tell you, Mr. Board members, that I probably won't do near as good as the four who just spoke in front of me. And that is a hard act, and that is a good-looking group, so...but we'll try to do the best we can. I'd like to recognize two, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Kelly Dombrowski. Krista Scrantz has worked as a Stanley County Schools Physical Education teacher for seven years. She came to our system as a top-notch graduate from Pfeiffer University and presently works at Central Elementary under the leadership of Principal Melissa Smith. She is passionate about her job and is threaded throughout the total school program. She has mentored many aspiring physical education interns in her short time. She is known by her students as Miss Sunshine. And when you meet her, you'll know why. And it's because of her ability and efforts to really make a difference. It is quite an honor to get to say tonight, congratulations on being selected the 2017 Elementary Teacher of the Year by the North Carolina Physical Education Association. Thank you for your commitment to the students of Stanley Counties. And Ms. Scrantz, if she's here, I'd love for her to come up. The second recognition is Ms. Karen Morton. She's a proud graduate of Appalachian State University and began her teaching career in Polk County, North Carolina. She moved to Florida where she taught grades one through six and was later appointed as principal while she was there. Luckily for us, she made her way to Stanley County Schools when she was hired to teach third-grade math at Stanfield Elementary in 2001. She received her National Board Certification in 2003 and was recertified in 2013. I had the privilege of working with Ms. Morton while serving as principal at Stanfield. As a new principal, to say I relied heavily on Ms. Morton is a true understatement. She taught me a lot over the three-year period that we worked together. She is a leader among her peers and well-respected throughout the county for her professionalism, her work ethic, and her outstanding character. It is my privilege to have worked with Ms. Morton, but more than that is my privilege to recognize her as the Outstanding Elementary Math Teacher for Stanley County Schools for 2017 and 2018 school year. If Ms. Morton is here? The next item, I'm going to ask Ms. Kelly Dombrowski to come speak. She wanted to recognize some teachers of Oakboro Chores Stadium.
They're a shy bunch. I would like to thank the board this evening for giving me the opportunity to recognize the dedication and the hard work of these professionals who are standing before you, as well as those who could not take time off from their second jobs, night classes, or family responsibilities to be here with us tonight. This does not lessen their commitment and grit that they have shown to not only open a new school, but to welcome over 300 students and their families from all over the county in four short months. Twenty-five teachers and staff chose to leave their comfort zones under the directive of the board to open a STEM school. They have created new learning environments and building features that revolve around STEM-styled learning. These teachers have worked through the difficulties of stretched resources, restocking of inventory and supplies, and established new routines and traditions by which children are enjoying and embracing each day. The staff has worked tirelessly to define what STEM should look like, not only for our... our school, but for our county. They have rewritten tried-and-true lesson plans to incorporate problem-based learning challenges each week and allow opportunities for students to take the lead in the lesson or the class. Most impressively, they have taken the challenge issued at the first of the year for each of them to write a grant. And as of this week, this team has secured over $20,000 in grants and community donations since August. Just yesterday, we found out that Ms. Griffin, our science grade, middle-grade science teacher, was awarded a Bright Ideas Grant for her seeds of sustainability in Oakboro. While we know this is a hefty goal, each one of these teachers continue to push each other daily to quote, "Do it different." Our staff is split evenly with half of our teachers within their first three years and the other half bringing a wealth of years and grade-level experience from which to share with one another, including myself, who now knows that kindergarten camp can be just as traumatic as the first day of school. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Henry Ford said of teamwork, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is a progress, and working together is success." These individuals came together in August and have already set their sights towards next year, what it should look like for our current students and for those who will apply. Their goal continues to focus and be focused on building a school of excellence, one that is focused on STEM, one that embraces the whole learner for who they are and who they have yet to become. These teachers in general, all of our teachers in general, do so very much each day that goes unnoticed. But tonight, I'm grateful for the opportunity to recognize the extraordinary efforts of the Oakboro Choice STEM staff and faculty and, and their support system in community and the tireless dedication and patience that they have shown to get our STEM school up and running. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming, Ms. Dombrowski, and making that presentation. We thank you for the hard work all of you've been doing at Oakboro this year. Just housekeeping note, if you, if you're wondering, the agenda you had laid on at your place tonight was a little bit different from the one you got in your packet. Item seven in the original one, American Legion Post, that presentation was canceled due to the fact that the people they were gonna recognize were at a ball, had to be at a ballgame tonight, so. Just wanted to explain the change in your agenda. Next item is our consent agenda, approval of minutes for our November 7th regular meeting. Do we have any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes? Here are none. The minutes will stand approved as presented. The next item on their agenda is, uh, I put this on as an action item because if we're gonna proceed with any of this, we need to go ahead and make a decision. Give the staff plenty of time to implement the mechanics of it. So if anyone wants to make a motion concerning the, uh, the two items here, well, actually it's just one. Before we, before we go into this, Ms. Harvey, could you go into the, um, legislation that's gonna affect this situation next year just a little bit?
Yes. Current legislation requires that we lower our K-three class size and as a result, we will have to employ additional K-three teachers. There are no regulations on our fourth and fifth grade class sizes. Law requires that K, kindergarten and first-grade classrooms be on the main floor of a building. Central Elementary School is restricted on the number of K-one classrooms based on the building layout that could be maintained on the main floor. Also, by tiering the schools, K-two at, at East Albemarle, which would keep us within the law for the K-one on the main floor of a building, and tiering three-five at Central Elementary, we will be able to have more of a specific focus on the developmental needs of the age level within each school.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harvey. The chair will entertain a motion if someone so desires to make a motion to start this process.
I move that we, um, take the K-two to East Albemarle and three-five to Central and do what we're supposed to follow.
Okay, the motion is to, I'll change this a little bit maybe, but you might, you let me know if it's okay. The motion is to tier the K-five grades into K-two at East and three-five at Central next year. Everybody understand the motion? Do we have a second for the motion? Can't even discuss it if we don't get a second.
I'll second it for the purposes of discussion.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a second though by Ms. Crump. Okay. Need to know where we're going with this.
I think it sounds like a, a great idea to discuss. I know we have discussed it and I'm more in favor of it than opposed to it. I just still have questions and I would like to just see how, uh, more of the plan unfold. I think it would take care of, um, the, the issue of keeping the, the children on the lower ish, all of that. But the, the thing I'm concerned about is I want to find out what the community wants because it will change the structure within Albemarle community. So I'm wondering if a public hearing would be good for this? It's just a suggestion. I don't know how y'all feel about that, but maybe to explain the situation and explain why this would be beneficial and, you know, the pros and the cons.
Have we looked at any other options or is this the only one we've really looked at? And again, I don't know that we've really discussed this that much.
Currently, with the numbers at each school, um, next year, if we made no changes, we would not be able to be compliant with the law with the K-one class sizes on the main floor at Central because there are not enough classrooms. Certainly be glad to go back and have more discussion and, um, input on this.
Harvey.
What, um, I'm thinking about the, um, the anticipated or the expected number of students. Can you, can you allude to that, like, the number of students that, the capacity for East Albemarle? What, what will it be if, you know, having the K-one and two there? What, what will the capacity be? And then at three-five, what will the capacity be at Central?
I don't have exact numbers, but I know that at, at East Albemarle, there are 22 classrooms, which is what we need for, um, the, the K-two class sizes or to accommodate the law in that. I did not bring those exact numbers with me.
I would like to see those numbers before I vote. I just wanna see more of the plan, maybe even an outline of the plan, um, for discussion.
Well, if, um, if Central cannot meet the new guidelines as far as having all the K-one on the main level, then you run into splitting up, having, I mean, having, I mean, there's no other choice then but to have to split up children, divide them, and send some then to East, correct? I mean, is that?
I believe that's correct. It would be similar to drawing, um, different specific lines for attendance.
Or what, Ms. Calvert? Oh. We wanna avoid that. I just, I'm just wondering, like, with the capacity, we're not gonna get into where we have to bring mo- mobile units to East Albemarle.
Our calculations at this time is no, that we can accommodate K-two at East.
Okay.
My basic concerns are if we take this year's K-two class sizes, move them into East, it'll be at or over capacity. Currently, and I understand we've got a legal situation that we need to adhere to, but there's more questions than answers at this time. If you look at the K-two numbers that we're working with in, in projecting out that we'd be over capacity or at capacity at East, that's with a substantially smaller kindergarten class overall compared to what is the norm in those two schools. So without seeing the projected numbers for kindergarten through second grade and knowing how that's gonna affect the overall capacity, I would like more information. It may be something we have to strongly consider, but I just don't have enough information to make an informed decision on.
Any, any other comments? And just, just for information purposes, the reason I'm putting on agendas, if this is something we're gonna do, we don't wanna wait till May or June decide to do it and cause the staff to have to have a lot of disruptions trying to figure out. So, uh, my sense is there's no even, no even, no, no need to even vote on this, but, I would ask the, take the liberty of asking the superintendent to do a layout on grades next year, uh, as much as possible to address the issue that Ms. Swearingen and Ms. Crump brought up. Yes, go ahead.
I have one additional question. The, the, the class size that's going 17 to one, 18 to one, is that on average across the district or is that specific to school?
It's specific per classroom and there's no...
There's no averaging at all, so if we've got 15 to one...
We've been able to do that traditionally as a student.
So, which begs the question, we could have a situation where we've got an, uh, an abnormality as far as when you've got four classrooms of kindergartners and you've got a 17 to one, do the math on it, you could end up having to have a one to seven, or a one to six, or a one to two class.
Or a combination.
Right. So even doing this may not solve the problem. We may end up with two teachers in one classroom regardless just because of the way the numbers are going.
Because usually we did combinations to, if there's a, like, seven kindergartners left, leftover. In kindergarten, it'll be one to 18.
So, but this, the rigidity of this mandate is going to create additional issues even if...
Ms. Watson, you wanna just pull the motion? I'll give you that liberty. We'll, we'll get this back on the agenda sometime when we got a little more information and more. Next item is the same thing. Of course, the next item will be contingent upon us getting funds anyway, but if, if we want to try to do this and, uh, we need to, uh, know if the board wants to go ahead and proceed with this and then we can develop, uh, what we wanna present to commissioners as far as funding for this, this, uh, program here. That's the Albemarle High School STEM package or STEM-focused program. Anyone wanna make a motion on that one? I thought we were at a point, we had a work session, I thought we were at a point you wanted to deal with these, but, uh, we're gonna run out of time. We're gonna get into a budget process that's gonna consume our time. We're gonna get into selecting a superintendent, which is gonna consume our time, so I'm just, I'm just trying to lay out the landscape. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Ms. Gibson.
The instructional curriculum committee met on November 28th, so there's several, I have several items to bring before the board tonight. First, the committee would like to present information to the board on the Alexander Youth Network, which is a program that provides quality treatment to our children in grades K through five with serious mental health needs. I've asked Ms. Beverly Pennington, Director of Student Services, to provide some more information before the board.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Wanted to give some, just an overview of what we're looking at right now. We are looking at starting a day treatment program to serve the needs of our K-five students. This would be district-wide. We have discussed locating this program at Millingport. The program, we would partner with Alexander Youth Network, whom we have partnered with before for day treatment services. And we would be looking at those students that are having a really difficult time being in the classroom because of behavioral, emotional needs that need to be addressed. Their setup with AYN is such that they're getting six hours of therapy a day and we fill in the gaps with the educational component. When we have discussed what this would look like with AYN, they would be bringing two positions to the table. One would be like a, a site manager. The other would be more of a, a assistant-type position, but then also a therapist would be not there full-time but would support the program as, as a halftime. We would be expected to supply the educational side of it. So in working with Susan Brooks, our elementary director, she has submitted a request through a Title IV grant funding opportunity. We just received word today that we were approved for that funding and this funding would support a part-time position to go along with this. So it is very much a need and we would like to go ahead and proceed with getting things going and, and getting it underway this school year. The reason that I'd like to see it happen before the school year is finished is because they have a very rich summer component that I think the students that would be served in this program could benefit from. So that is where we are with that at this point and I'll entertain questions if you have any. No, ma'am. This is a day-long program, so we're looking at, students would be dual-enrolled in whatever school their base school is and they would, in the period of time that they're in this program, they would be served at Millingport. The typical length of service in this program is six to nine months. Having had this program at Albemarle Middle School, very familiar with, you know, what they do in this program, what I was very impressed with was the return of a, a student to their base school. It's not, you know, out the door and good luck to ya. They see, it's a process and they support that child through that transition back. I have seen lots of success with this I have seen lots of success with this program. I think that we can benefit, uh, some, some needs earlier on, moving it to elementary level. Uh, that is something that we would have to provide. Um, we talked to, uh, the AYN representatives, and they told us some counties around us that have elementary programs, um, are able to bill Medicaid, uh, for transportation services. So, uh, now that we just found out today that, uh, the, the, uh, teaching position could be funded, uh, it's time to have those conversations possibly with, uh, Department of Social Services and maybe SCUSA as to whether we could, uh, pull those dollars down to help with that.
Thank you, Ms. Pennington. I know that due to the need and the urgency, um, we, the anticipation, I, I believe Ms. Pennington spoke about wanting to have a start-up date by March, um, therefore, I move that the board goes forward with establishing the implementation of the Alexander Youth Network program for our qualifying students in grades K through five, um, that it will be housed on the campus of Millingport Elementary School.
Motion, second. And, uh, Ms. Gibson, could you restate that motion, because I know I'm going to botch it up.
I'll try to make it a little bit briefer. I just moved that, that the board, um, goes forward with establishing the implementation of the Alexander Youth Network program for our qualifying students in grades K through five.
Okay, I'm going to let that be the restatement of the motion. Does everyone understand the motion? No one does, doesn't understand, please signify by saying aye. Okay. All those in favor, uh, correction, we need some discussion here. Anybody want to ask some questions? I'm sorry, thank you.
Ms. Penning?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned Medicaid billing. I know there's some other opportunities for Medicaid billing potentially, uh, involved in your department. Would, would this give you a little more, um, experience with that, or people within your department more experience with that, and be able to bill other things besides transportation on this?
I'm not certain of that. We can certainly inquire about that, any...
I know your school nurses and social workers have, have entertained that over the years.
Correct.
There's an element there, and I'm just wondering, wondering if this experience may open that avenue up as well for some additional dollars.
It may, and I'll be glad to investigate that with DSS and, uh, see what we can find out.
And, um, outside of the grant, any idea of what our expected cost, uh, supplementing the program might would be, any sort of allocated cost?
No other cost. It would be our responsibility to get the students there for the program and provide the educational component.
Any other discussion? Any questions? Here none. Uh, those in favor of the motion as stated, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Ms. Gibson?
Yes, I have a couple more items. Thank you, Ms. Pennington. Uh, we all know that it's, uh, quickly approaching the time for students that have an interest in Stanley Early College High School to submit applications. A frequently asked question to Mr. Kevin Adams, the principal, is if a student can return to their home school to participate in high school athletics. And, you know, that as of now, we haven't been doing that, but it seems like this, this is a common question, and looking at this, that we're not wanting to keep any of our students from, um, wanting to, to go to the early college, to take advantage of that, to excel at that, um, and yet, you know, be able to play sports at their home schools. So, um, the committee's bringing before the board to consider this for the next upcoming school year beginning in August, so it's not like now for, uh, winter sports or spring sports. This would be the starting, start-up for next school year. And a schedule will be worked out where students will not miss any time in their core classes, um, if they were needing to leave early for any type of practice or games, and parents are going to be expected to provide transportation for these students. So, um, this is what we are bringing before the board. We need to take action on it tonight, just because I know that January, February here, they are starting that application process. And if, if you have, um, some questions to entertain with this, Mr. Poplin, would you please, okay, help us?
Okay, as I under, chair understands the motion, the motion is to allow students at the early college to participate in athletics at their home school, starting in the fall of nineteen, or...
Two thousand eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. I'm only a hundred years behind. Twenty eighteen. Okay, everyone understand the motion? Or do we have any discussion or any questions?
I'll second it.
Okay. We don't really need a second. It's coming from the committee, so it's, uh, doesn't need a second. Thank you. Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. You still have...
I have one more item. Lastly, um, it is that time for students to begin the application process for Oakboro Choice STEM, um, and I'm going to call upon Ms. Dombrowski to present to the board, um, kind of the process, a timeline, um, criteria that they are coming up with for, um, students to apply to Oakboro Choice STEM. Thank you, Ms. Dombrowski.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. We did speak with the instructional committee, um, with regards to planning for next year and looking ahead, uh, with, with the enrollment process and still keeping Oakboro Choice STEM a choice school, uh, for students to come to us from all over the county. Um, we would like to start that process a little bit earlier with enrollment opening, the window opening, um, February first. In your packets, you'll see a timeline, uh, a rough timeline to begin, um, the enrollment process with a six-week application period, um, to give our, our staff and, uh, teachers an opportunity to review student applications. Uh, this would move it a little bit further from open enrollment, so much as to make sure and help our students ensure that this is the best fit for them, uh, that the STEM atmosphere is truly what they are looking to follow and learn within, um, that K-2 would be open, in a sense, using kindergarten camp, um, any assessments and, and maturity to make sure that they're ready for kindergarten like any other student, um, but the grade levels of three through eight, to be able to use some sort of rubric to evaluate the students who are coming to us from all over the county, um, and their readiness to step into the rigor that's expected, um, at a STEM school. And current students would be asked to just reply in a letter that they would like to return, um, so that we know how many students are in each grade level and can plan appropriately so that we may, uh, have our class sizes and training set before, uh, August, and allow our teachers to prepare appropriately for those students. If we did that, we would hope to have three hundred and sixty students in our school and build each, each year, with this being the start.
Thank you. So, hearing the, the need with the application process to get started, um, early, and also the fact that the rubric has, you know, been developed, um, seems like it's a little bit more stringent somewhat, criteria might have for Oakboro Choice. But after hearing Ms. Dombrowski, um, I move that the board accept the timeline and the criteria for the application process, um, for Oakboro Choice STEM school.
Okay, was that a committee recommendation, or is that...
Yes.
It is. Okay, so we don't need a second. Okay, the motion is, uh, I want to do a summation. You, if you have a problem with it, let me know. Uh, the motion is to allow, uh, Ms. Dombrowski to initiate the, uh, uh, application process for Oakboro STEM, uh, school, uh, according to the timeframe she's laid out.
Yes.
Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Here none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Carry on, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dombrowski.
And that's all I have, Mr. Paul.
Uh, next committee report, Mr. Ryan McIntyre, Facilities.
Uh, the Facilities Committee met on November twenty-eighth, and it was just to discuss Policy Twenty Ten, Community Use of Facilities. Of course, you have that in your packet, um, and as of right now, we don't have anything to present other than the fact that, uh, Ms. Hatley, Mr. Bowers, and, um, Ms. Harvey, I think is going to look at that and come up. One of the main focuses was, um, I think, the application process and the fee structure. But we'll be, um, bringing that back in the committee and, um, trying to clean that up and come up with a new fee structure, because it's a little bit outdated. I believe the last time it was updated was thirteen fourteen, so, that's all we have.
Okay, uh, finance, Ms. Watson.
Yes, we met on November the twenty-eighth also, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hatley to pull up some things that we discussed.
At the November twenty-eighth Finance Committee meeting, I presented information regarding the budget and issues with the administrative supplement increases and increases to the teacher assistant hours. The committee approved a recommendation of delay be presented to the board at the next regular meeting. The delay would be until the sustainability of the current and next year's budget for these items can be determined.
Okay, so what's the motion?
I believe we discussed waiting till the end of January for this current year, and then we, we may have more information for the next year as well at that time, or we may have to reconsider for the next year.
This was in regard to, um, additional hours rate for TAs, and what else?
The administrator increase in supplements. There were two items that were, um, included in this year's budget.
All right, so the motion out of committee is delay, uh, until at least January, the, um, increases in hours and the supplements for the administrators. No second needed out of committee. Does anyone, uh, everyone understand the motion? Are there any discussions? Any, any questions? Here none, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you. Is that all you have, Ms. Watson? Personnel, Ms. Patty Crump.
We have not had a meeting, but I do want to schedule a meeting, um, within the week, and so if everybody on the personnel committee could look at your calendar for Monday, um, either around lunch or five-thirty that evening, we can just figure out a majority Monday. I can do six. Ms. Calvert, six o'clock.
Okay, what was that date again?
So, Monday, I'll have to look on my calendar. What's that?
Days.
The eleventh, December eleventh, at six o'clock PM, we'll have a personnel committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you have?
No, sir.
That's it, okay. Uh, policy, Mr. Ryan McIntyre, I understand you have a bevy of, uh, policies to present.
Yes, um, I am simply going to run down the policy numbers and, uh, name policies, more or less to ensure that you have all of them in your packet. These are simply for presentation purposes. We will be, um, tabling these and voting on them in January. At our November eighth meeting, um, we made revisions to the following policies. Policy eleven-twenty-five, conferences, conventions, and workshops. Policy thirty-one-forty-five, class ranking. Policy thirty-one-fifty-five, student promotion and accountability. Policy thirty-one-sixty-five, graduation requirements. Policy thirty-one-seventy-five, transcripts. Policy thirty-five-sixty, Title One, parent involvement and family engagement. Policy forty-one-eighty-five, interscholastic athletics. Policy sixty-thirty, school wellness, and, uh, proposed policy forty-one-seventy-one, student voter registration. Tonight, we had a policy meeting for the board meeting, and we also addressed, um, and they, there's an additional, um, some more policies added to your packet to address the ones that we touched on tonight. It's policies, uh, forty-fifteen, student assignment. Policy forty-one-ninety, fundraising procedures. On that, that same policy, um, it's basically getting rid of the, the form that goes along with that. And policy fifty-two-fifteen, grant writing, payments, and compensation.
Okay, as the chair understands this, the changes are either highlighted in yellow or marked through, deleted. Is that correct? Uh, okay, so, these will be, uh, put out for thirty days, and then we will, uh, the January meeting, deal with these, uh, as far as a vote is concerned.
And just to ensure everybody, um, is up to speed, um, policy fifty-two-fifteen, uh, we made a slight adjustment to tonight. I just want to ensure everybody's packet has that, um, as far as the payment structure. The first line of zero to fifty thousand, um, is going away, and the first payment structure is actually going to be zero to one hundred thousand. And we also, um, strike through the additional five percent of amount over fifty thousand one, and the additional on the two percent of amount over a hundred thousand one.
Okay, I, unless I'm missing something, the, the three additions have not been included in this part. Okay. I'm sorry. I'm still going with what I got in the mail. Sorry, Mr. McIntyre. All right, so everyone has those? Okay. Anything else, Ms. McIntyre?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Harvey, do you have anything on Legislative Network?
No report.
Okay. Mr. Poplin, you're up.
I have two items, one that requires action from the board. I'd like to ask, uh, for January eighteenth and January nineteenth, which is the last day of exams, and the nineteenth is the make-up day, uh, to make that a one o'clock release for high school and middle schools, uh, since they, three of the four do share transportation. Basically, we do tutoring, uh, on the first three days, but on that fourth day, the last exam, there is no tutoring, so we typically release them at one.
What days are we looking at again?
Uh, January eighteenth and nineteenth, and we have had discussion in next calendar to build this in the calendar, because basically we come every semester, you know, and ask for this. Maybe we'll try to, to put it in the calendar next time, if I can remember.
This is early release for students, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a one o'clock. Instead of early release is tip, is, is earlier, it's eleven forty-five, and that's why I'm, I wanted to make it a one o'clock, this minutes.
Okay.
Both days, yes, ma'am.
Chair, will you entertain a motion? A motion by Ms. Gibson to accept the recommendation, Mr. Poplin, for a one o'clock release on eighteen nineteenth. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. Any discussion, questions? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no? Okay, thank you. You have anything else?
Thank you. Yes, I have just one point of information for the board. Uh, I would like to make the board aware that Ms. Michelle Meehan, uh, Meehan, out at West Stanley Middle School, received a five hundred dollar grant from the Union Electric, bright idea, very similar to Oakboro, uh, and of course, she was not here tonight, so I just wanted to make the, the board aware of that. And then we may have others, but at this time... And then we may have others, but at this time, that's the only one that I'm aware of. Just wanted to share. Her, her grant was buying books for the classroom. Thank you.
Ms. Calvert.
I'd like to draw your attention to the personnel agenda in your packets. Section one is for your information, but I'd like to draw your attention to, um, Item D. Um, the attachment, we've listed all the winter sport coaches in our high schools, just for your information, um, and it tells if they're a Stanley County Schools employee or not. So that's just for your information. Yes? Okay, sure. And then Section two requires action.
Entertainer motion on Section two, then.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to, um, take the offense, discussing, uh, Section eight.
Okay, uh, requests have been made to pull Section B, so the motion would be, if we have a motion to approve Section two, it would be, uh, approval with the exception of B.
With approval of Section two, less B.
A motion by Mr. Swerengen to approve Section two with, uh, minus B. Do we have a second? Second, uh, all right, all those in favor, let me, any discussion further? All those in favor signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
Thank you.
Someone please remind me of that when we get to closed session. Okay. Ms. Hatley, you have something for us?
Yes, sir, I have in your packets two budget amendments that will require action tonight. The first one is Budget Amendment Number Three to the Local Special Expense Fund. These are adjustments that were made for Medicaid reimbursement and an increase to the fund for JCPC grant.
We'll deal with these one at a time, so we'll go ahead and, uh, anyone want to make a motion on Budget Amendment Three?
With approval, Budget Amendment Three.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Three by Mr. Swerengen. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. Is there any discussion or anyone have any questions? Here and none, all those in favor of, uh, the motion signify, say an aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
The next one is Budget Amendment Four. This is to the State Public School Fund. Um, this is showing a decrease in the amount of five hundred eighty-four thousand and sixty dollars. These are due to revisions made by the Department of Public Instruction for state funds. I would like to provide a little bit more information about this. I mentioned this at the, um, joint meeting with the City Council, the, um, Amherst City Council. I have also brought to your attention that we should possibly have a reduction in allocations based on our best one of two ADM report. We're still waiting for those reports to come out from DPI. They should be received sometime here, the middle of December. However, what I was not prepared for was this reduction, and this is due to the charter school first month reduction. So what, what is involved with that is that the charter schools project their enrollment for the year, and they receive allotments from DPI for those projections. After their first month, ADM is collected and sent to DPI. They compare that to the projections, and if the ADM is higher than the projections, then they reduce the LEAs, um, by those amounts. The projection that we had, or the, the projection that was made was off by one hundred and eighteen students, and that's for Greystone and NC Virtual School and NC Connections Academy. Given the one hundred and eighteen students that were not projected, we received reductions in our state allotments totaling over five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and including over five classroom teacher positions, about a half of an instructional support position, and five, almost six months of employment for career and technical education. So this Budget Amendment Number Four represents the reductions, and where we took those from, from the different program areas where DPI made those reductions.
Do we have a motion on, uh, Budget Amendment Four? Motion by Ms. Watson to approve, uh, Budget Amendment Four. Uh, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Crump. Okay, the motion is, again, is to, uh, accept or to approve Budget Amendment Four. Are there any discussion or any questions?
Out of those one hundred and eighteen students, how many went to Greystone Middle?
I'd have to look back at the allotment information on that, of the, the majority. Yes, I can.
I'd like to know that and make it public.
Okay. Would that be okay to send in an email or at the next meeting?
Just copy everyone on that.
Chairman. I'd like to say also, I, I am a little appalled at the time limit for DPI. I mean, this, we are already in, on Christmas time, and they should have done that a long time ago. So I'm a little disappointed with DPI with that thing.
Any other comments or discussion? Here and none, those in favor of Budget Amendment Four signify, say an aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Looking for good news after Christmas, okay?
I hope so. I hope Santa comes quickly.
Uh, don't think, I do have one signed up for, uh, comments. Angela Bryant, Richfield.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Angela Bryant. I have a junior at Albemarle High School, and basically, I'm here to say thank you to this Board. I wanted to read you a text that I sent to everybody on my contacts list on March fourteenth of twenty sixteen. And it in part reads, "To save our communities, our schools, our way of life, please get out and vote tomorrow. The candidates below all have pledged to fight for our children. Melvin Poole, Patty Crump, Glenda Gibson, Vicky Watson, and Ryan McIntyre." So obviously, I was very pleased with the outcome of those elections. But I was apprehensive. There was a lot of trust shattered in, to, from me with the previous Board. But I was hopeful, and I will say, and this is why I'm here, my hopefulness has paid off in the placement that y'all made of Mr. Toby McLaren at Albemarle High School. I didn't know what to expect, same thing, let's see how it goes. But I can tell you, from the time he's been there, there has been a dramatic, a dramatic change, and it's all been positive. He has given those kids, he's given them hope again. A lot of them had given up, and I think that showed in grades, I think that showed in a lot of ways the last couple of years. He's given them hope again. He has proven to them that he cares. He is, um, I can't believe I'm ex, just so overwhelmed about the changes, and I'm amazed it's so quick. I never, best case scenario, what I have thought, this quickly, this many good things could have changed or happened at that school. And it's amazing. The, the teachers and the students are getting goals, are getting, setting goals for themselves. I asked my son, I said, "Tell me the, the, the main thing that you think is better, since Mr. McLaren has been there." And he said, "Well, it's not chaotic anymore." He said, "There's structure, there's discipline." I see, he said, "I see him." He said, "I see Mr. McLaren once, twice a day." He said, "I never saw the principal before." He talks to us, he asks us, you know, "How are things, you know, what's going on?" "Everything good." I, I know you see numbers, and I know y'all see grades, and I know, everyone knows, the dismal report card that Albemarle High School got from the state last year. And I also know that was based on last year's grades, last year's performances, last year's testing. I do know that for the, um, benchmark that was taken this school year, that Albemarle High School scored above or at district level, district average. This I know. To me, that is just, it, it's just another sign that y'all put the right person in the right place. And as one overprotective, very, um, I can get really worked up about my kids, I thank you. I've been here before, these meetings years ago, fussing. I didn't like what y'all were doing, or what, not y'all, but you know what I'm saying, the Board was doing. I wanted you to hear, I thank you for what you've done at Albemarle High School. And I, I urge you, um, the kids, and I sent an email to Ms. Harvey, the kids are buying what he's selling, A-Town All-In. And you can see it, you can feel it in that school, you see it in the children, the kids' behavior. They are proud. They, they, they want to make Albemarle proud. They know what they almost lost, and they want it. They want to prove that y'all did the right thing. Okay? And I thank you. I can't thank you enough. And I'm, and this, this dude from Anson County, but he is so dedicated to Albemarle High School. In fact, I did get a text tonight that he's coaching the cheerleaders at the basketball game, because the cheerleading coach, excuse me, the cheerleading coach was sick. So I'm sorry, to me, that's impressive. If he can jump in, he helps where he can, and I just, I want to thank you. And please, I implore you, I will beg you, keep supporting him. Keep giving him, I don't know what he needs, I have no clue, but just keep supporting him, because the, if he can do this much in the few, little bit of time he's been there, imagine the improvements that y'all will see in a couple of years. I just thank you for giving my son a chance to have the high school experience he should be having, because he didn't have it these past two years. But he's, he had, he's, so far, he's having it this year, and I am very hopeful for the rest of his.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
Thank you.
Next, we have, uh, Superintendent Comments.
I would like to invite everyone to, um, visit their, uh, community schools websites. There are a lot of, uh, holiday events going on at our schools, and, um, certainly want you to be able to take advantage of, um, attending some of those. And I'd also like to thank our Stanley County Schools staff and wish them a Merry Christmas.
Mr. McIntyre, I'm going to lead off with you tonight.
First, I would like to thank our North Stanley High School Chorus and Handbells for coming out and performing for us tonight. Thank you to the folks from E.S.A.L.B. Marl, Community Partnership Project, for coming out. Congratulations to everyone who was recognized. And also, I feel like I'm overlooking someone, but also, um, thank you to Ms. Bryant coming out and speaking. It's always great to hear good things. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Okay, Ms. Watson.
I'd like, I also like to, uh, thank Ms. Hudson for bringing out, uh, the ensemble, and I love your expressions to the, the girls up here. Um, and also, uh, everyone that hasn't got awards, uh, I thank you for all your services, and I hope everyone has a very merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year, and come back with bells on for a new year.
Okay, Ms., uh, Patty Crump.
I was especially excited to listen to Bristol, Braxton, Ariana, and Vincent. I think, uh, we all could learn a little bit of what each of them told us, uh, would make a good leader. So I'll be taking that advice. Thank you, Ms. Bryant, for coming up here and sharing the good news at Albemarle High School that you're seeing. I'm hearing good things, too. That's good. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Crump. Ms. Gibson, back cleanup.
Ms. Asa Hudson, thank you. It's always a pleasure, and, um, I appreciate everything that you do. And for the four children that presented their speeches, what makes a good leader. They, they certainly had some real good advice. I agree with Patty. For all of us to live by. For the teachers that were recognized tonight, um, thank you so much for all that you do, and, um, the grants that you've received, Oakboro Choice STEM. You always make me proud. It's just, it's just great. So I appreciate everything that, that you are doing there, um, with the STEM School. Ms. Bryant, thank you for, for your, um, comments at the end. And I hope everyone has Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Thank everyone for coming tonight, and no one mentioned this yet, but we had something. Is this, is this for the public here, or is this the chili cook-off? Is this just for Board members? Okay, all the Board members, pay attention to the chili cook-off notice in your packet. Like to thank you, I guess, for, uh, putting me back in the hot seat again for the next year. I would like to thank all of you. This, this past year is, uh, out of twenty years of service on this Board, I think this past year has been probably one of the most enjoyable. We've, uh, we've had some disagreements along the way, but we've managed to work through them, and, uh, I hope that will be a pattern for the future. And I think all of you have, uh, demonstrated to me that you care about the school system, you care about the kids in it, and that's, that's important. And I'd like to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas, and extend my congratulations to Ms. Gibson on being elected by Chair. I'd like to thank Ms. Harvey, uh, for the way you've, uh, worked with us the last, you got stuck in the hot seat, too, I understand that, and, and you've been doing a good job. We appreciate that. Our next, uh, regular scheduled meeting, um, will be, uh, the Commissioners, and speaking of the Commissioners, just, just to update you, I, I did go to speak at their meeting last night, and hopefully, we can get a, a, a meeting with them arranged sometime in the latter part of January, discuss, uh, budget situation for upcoming year. But they will be using this meeting room on Tuesday, the, the second. So, uh, we will be making, uh, a trek to Norwood for our Board meeting. The, um, invite the community to come out, uh, the Town Board, whoever else is available to come out, and, um, give you a chance, if you hadn't already seen it, to, um, I'll give, the last Board initiated this project, and we happened to be around when it got completed, but, uh, it's something that Town of Norwood and the community can be proud of. But if you haven't been there, they'll give you a chance to see that. But the Board meeting will be held there on the seventh of, uh, January, or second of January at seven o'clock, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters under North Carolina General Statute one four three, three eighteen point one one A six, and Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point one one A one, and Attorney at Court Matters under North Carolina General Statute one four three three eighteen one, one, one one A three. Motion going to closed session. Motion going to closed session under appropriate statutes, so have a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Going to closed session, please consider a five-minute recess en route. Thank you. Call the open session back to order. We have, Chair will entertain a motion on Section 2B of Personnel. Okay, a motion by Mr. Swerengen to approve 2B. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Moves adjourned by Ms. Swerengen, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. See you in Norwood in January. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, motion is adjourned, meeting is adjourned. Motion is adjourned.